Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is George Wolfe, Lower Paxton Township's manager, and I will briefly summarize tonight's business meeting agenda as the supervisors prepare to conduct business. We have one ceremonial item this evening. There will be a presentation by Carol Pottinger of a donation to a future Lower Paxton Township Dog Park. After that donation, then, under Old Business, the Board will consider two items. The first is action to ratify the appointment of an interim Public Safety Director, and the second is Resolution 11 for this year, which develops a fee schedule for on-lot septic system enforcement in Lower Paxton Township. Under New Business, there is a resolution approving a master lease agreement for a skid steer loader. There is a second resolution for a second master lease agreement, however, that one has been removed from the agenda in that that item is not complete for action this evening. That will be followed by a status report on procurement for solid waste and recycling in Lower Paxton Township with an effective date of January, July 2, 2018. The Board will consider normal improvement guarantees, payment, and pay bills. Ladies and gentlemen, that completes the summary of the agenda for this evening. The supervisors are at the podium and ready to conduct business.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe. We'll call this meeting of the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors to order. Like everybody to please rise, and Mr. Christman will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we proceed to the agenda, I would like to announce that prior to this meeting, the Board of Supervisors received information from the township manager, which included the scheduling of events and meetings. The Board also met an executive session to discuss a number of personnel issues. With that, we have before us approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of November 14, 2017?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, we approve the minutes of November the 14th, 2017, as prepared and circulated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now is the time set aside for public comment. Is there anybody present who would like to address the Board of Supervisors on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Can anybody like to address the Board on a matter that is not on the agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will move to Chairman and Board Member comments. I will hold my comments till later. Would any member of the Board like to make comments at this time?
I don't have any this time, I'm sorry.
Wow.
I was gonna yield my time to you.
Everybody's yielding their time. That brings us to the managers' report, Mr. Wolfe.
Board members, just two items of importance for this evening. The first is a business-related item. This Thursday evening, Thursday, March 8, beginning at 6:30 PM, there will be a presentation by the Planning Commission and a comprehensive planning consultant of the draft Comprehensive Plan for our community. An informal open house will begin at 6:30 with the presentation, and people can casually review the maps and documents related to the plan. Prior to an official public meeting, at which time, public comment will be made, will be taken by the Planning Commission on the Comprehensive Plan. Our community is certainly invited to attend this Thursday night, 6:30 for informally reviewing planned documents, and 7 o'clock for a public meeting with public comment on the draft Comprehensive Plan. And then something of a little bit more fun, there will be a chili cook-off in Lower Paxton Township at the Friendship Center on Saturday, April 28, beginning at 8:00 AM and extending to 1:00 PM. Individuals that are interested in cooking chili can go to the Township Friendship Center website and sign up, and of course, our entire community is invited to attend the Friendship Center on the 28th and sample some chili. So with that, Board members, if you like chili, April 28, the Friendship Center will be the place to be. Denise Sessar, who is the chairperson of the Chili Cook-Off Committee and a member of the Friendship Center Operating Board, will be here at a future board meeting to provide a more detailed report. And if there are no questions, Board members, that completes the information I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe. We also now have a presentation of a donation to the township by Carol Pottinger. If you would come to the podium, Carol, and explain to us what the donation is.
Hi, Carol Pottinger from the Lower Paxton Happy Tales Dog Park. A little bit of background, in 2008, a few people got together and decided that there might be a need for a dog park in the township. We did a grassroots survey, and indeed, there was interest, enthusiastic interest for a dog park in the township. We gathered a few people together, who worked very hard, getting donations, getting a grant, doing research on various dog parks so that we could get all the rules and everything set up, presented it to the Board of Supervisors, who were very, very cooperative. We found a place in the township to have the park. We funded all the fencing, the benches, the kiosk, and everything from our various fundraisers, and it has been probably one of the most, if not the most consistently-used facility in the township, rain or shine, a lot of times, dawn to dusk, every day of the week, all year long. We committed to five years, which has been up for a while now, since we opened the park in, was Memorial Day, 09? Memorial Day, 2009, and since then, we have some excess funds. The township has assured us that at some point in time, we will get another dog park, but right now, that's gonna be in the future, and we're tired. So, we came up with a plan, and I'd like to introduce our Secretary of Treasure, Sandy Troxell.
I second Carol's comments about the popularity of our dog park, and I'm assuming dog park number two will be just as popular. And it's with great pleasure that we present this check to the township in Escrow for fencing for the second dog park in the amount of $10,000.
Oh.
Thank you.
Great.
That's a lot of money.
Get in the middle.
Bring them up.
Yeah, and I'll have this for...
Up here, up here, up here, up here.
Well, that's right. You have to get up and down, too. Oh, yeah, okay.
We're used to the money flowing the other direction. We have everybody in here? All right.
Does she give you the check? Who has the check?
Usually. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for all your work.
Oh, thank you.
That's gonna go to Wolfensberger.
What's that? The new dog park will be, well, you can say that.
It'll be the Troxell part of your dog park.
I mean, is that proofreading?
It's in the plan. We approved the plan.
Mrs. Lindsay, you wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment that the new dog park down the road will be at Wolfensberger Park, and that's off of Winrick Street. So, when we can get enough money to do the park, that's where the new dog park will be, so that we'll have one on the north side and one on the south side also. So, thank you again, ladies, we really appreciate it.
Okay, that brings us to Old Business, and we have a very pleasurable activity to undertake tonight, and I know those folks watching at home can see us, but they cannot see who all happens to be here in the meeting room tonight, starting out with numerous members of the Lower Paxton Township Police Department. I hope somebody's left to be out on the streets patrolling. We are so pleased to have members of the Lower Paxton Township Police Department with us this evening, along with a number of other dignitaries, including our District Attorney, Fran Chardo, our Sheriff, Nick Tremonti. I see Judges Wenner and Lindsay are with us. Did I miss anybody hiding behind somebody?
I see Jason.
And the reason why everybody is gathered here tonight is the Board is preparing to take action on naming a new Acting Public Safety Director for Lower Paxton Township. At this time, the Board is going to take action on appointing the interim Public Safety Director, Mr. Adam Kosheba, and I'm going to say a few words about Mr. Kosheba, but before I do, I think it might be appropriate for the Board to make a motion for his appointment, and then if Board members would like to vote on that, we'll then introduce him, have Board Member comments, and then, Mr. Kosheba, if you would like to say a few words at that point. So, at this point, the Chair will entertain a motion relative to the appointment of a Public Safety Director.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we appoint Adam Kosheba as our interim Public Safety Director.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we appoint Adam Kosheba as our acting public, interim Public Safety Director. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And everybody is in agreement. Before we introduce Mr. Kosheba, I want to say a few words about him. He has had an extensive career in law enforcement, spanning 25 years. You don't look like you've been at it for 25 years, Mr. Kosheba. Most recently, he served as the commanding officer of the Pennsylvania State Police Troop H out of Harrisburg, where he oversaw a team of over 400 enlisted and civilian members. Mr. Kosheba held the rank of Captain as Troop H Commander, and he began his career with the Pennsylvania State Police in 1993. He serves as Chief of the Maytown East Donegal Township Fire Department, and has been active with the department since 1995. Mr. Kosheba's public service and emergency management background are a welcome addition to the Lower Paxton Township. And so, on behalf of the Board of Director, the Board of Supervisors, the Lower Paxton Township Police Department, our township staff, and the community, I would like to welcome Mr. Adam Kosheba as our new Public Safety Director. Mr. Kosheba? Mr. Kosheba, if you would like to come up to the podium and say a few words, we would most welcome that, and then Board members, I think, might have a few things to say to you as well. So, if you would come up here, so you can be seen by our television audience, we would appreciate it.
Chairman, Board of Supervisors, thank you. Guest, the men and women in the Police Department, this is overwhelming, simply overwhelming to see the support of the Police Department here, the members of the Fire Department, the EMS folks here, some very good friends and some people that have helped me along the way. It's been a heck of a ride in the last week or two, retiring from the State Police officially today, and stepping into this new role tomorrow. I look back on my career, and you heard some comments from the Chairman. At age 14, I stepped into the volunteer fire service and have loved every minute of it. Had the opportunity to get into law enforcement and loved every minute that I spent in the Pennsylvania State Police and working with individuals constantly from local police agencies, federal police agencies, and some of the best relationships that I have built were with those agencies, with several members of your Police Department here as well. And I truly am looking forward to such a great opportunity to step in as your part-time or intermediate Public Safety Director. I'm hopeful that I'm gonna do the job and fill the role that everyone's hoping that I can do here. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. It's just, I'm taken back by the support here, and I hope that I'm gonna be able to represent the township and the Police Department, Fire Department's, and EMS here as well, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
I think some of our Board members may have some words of welcome. Gary, we'll start with you and work our way down the line, if you would like to say anything.
Welcome, good luck, as you begin tomorrow.
Welcome, Director. I'm sure you know that for municipalities, Police Department and the Fire Departments as well, they're so big a part of the identity of the township, and it's, Police and Fire is something that people of this township have always been proud of, and it's good to have a Director in place, you know, public safety's in the news too much, and I feel good bringing you in and having you in. It's a very important position, and it's one that I know we have a lot of confidence in, we welcome you, and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hawke?
First of all, I welcome you to the Lower Paxton Township staff, and just the people in this room play such a large, large part in the quality of life of this township, and we're happy to have you join them, and I'm sure that they feel the same way to have you onboard and starting work tomorrow morning. But it was really a delight to meet and interview you, so to speak, and the questions, and I was very, very impressed with the way you approached each question, because some of them put you on the, challenged you, and you handled it absolutely superbly in my mind, and it's just a delight to see this kind of support.
Sure is.
And congratulations. I'm not gonna wish you luck, because you're gonna make it yourself with all these people behind you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, welcome aboard. Thank you to his family for allowing him to come to us, and I'm not gonna cry, but the unity that we have here tonight, they're very excited, we're excited. We're excited to have you here, be part of our family. I've been a resident here for 60 years, and you're a breath of fresh air, so by everybody that is here tonight, aye, what a great person.
Thank you, ma'am.
So, thank you again, we really appreciate you coming onboard.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Director, you know, we're very fortunate here in Lower Paxton to have one of the finest municipal police departments in the country, so you are stepping into a township with a very proud tradition, and for good reason, and we count it fortunate that we have a Public Safety Director who has not only the extensive police background you have, but the service that you've rendered your community as a volunteer firefighter, and your background as an EMS, because Public Safety Director handles all three components. That is a rare find, we're pleased to have you with us, and as Mr. Hawke said, see you tomorrow morning, we're gonna put your right to work.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
Let me welcome you.
And Adam, could we have you introduce your family when you're finished?
Please introduce your family. Okay. Thank you, sir. Why don't we bring your picture up? Yes, I'm sorry.
Bring them up, please.
All the supervisors, introduce your family to us. Let's get your picture.
So, first is my wife, Melissa, my daughter Jessica, my daughter Lauren, my sister-in-law Kelly, and my father-in-law, Rick.
Stand in the front. Get your wife and your family around you here. Are you wanting a medal? Okay.
When it comes to pictures, we do whatever they ask us. No, why don't we get somebody on the other side? No, why don't you stand in front of me?
Come on, guys, get closer, you've gone up before.
Try it, go ahead.
Hey, guys, can you all go up there and I'll stand in the chair and everybody, please? I asked.
Oh, my God.
Don't bow down.
Oh, okay, okay. Wow.
Yeah, tall guy.
Don't matter what happens, always end up behind all tall guys.
That's what we got you for.
Thank you.
that need to be made. We have, we have, every time we have an item on the agenda, we do have public comment on that item, and our County Sheriff would like to make a few, say a few words.
I didn't do that.
Well, I was told you wanted to make, you wanted to make some comments.
Fran made.
Since you're so bashful, all I wanted to say, all I wanted to say was congratulations to Adam, and what a great breath of fresh air you're gonna bring to this department. And I've worked with Adam for quite a few years, and let me tell you, this man is a man of integrity, and he is one of the fine gentlemen, and I think you guys are gonna be happy that he's here, so congratulations, I'm just gonna make sure. So, you guys got a great decision. Congratulations.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Sheriff. How about Fran?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a comment, please?
Yes, yes, Mrs. Lindsay.
I just want to acknowledge that the chiefs from the fire companies are also here, and Chief Campbell from South Central EMS is also here, so I wanted to thank you guys for coming, along with...
Very good, yes.
Well, I guess if he would like.
Mr. District Attorney, it seems Mr. Christman thinks that you ought to say a few words, too.
I guess he gets prepared comments, right?
Mr. Kosheba, this is turning into a testimony.
Well, if the Sheriff can do it, I'll do it, too. No, I echo what the Sheriff said. I'm gonna have to get used to not calling him Captain Kosheba, but the Director is a superb individual, and he's gonna do a great, great job. Worked with him for many years, and we got along superbly. We worked closely together for the last, my first two months in office, we worked closely together on some critical incidents, and I look forward to continuing to work closely with him, and you made a superb choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Anybody else wish to comment? Well, Mr. Kosheba, it appears you're off to a good start, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to working with you over the months and years ahead. So, thank you, and thanks for everybody to be here to support our new Public Safety Director. And with that...
You're welcome to listen to us talk about the on-lot sewage ordinance that's coming up, but you don't have to.
Wait a minute, why would anybody leave whenever you have that to discuss? Well, you know how to clear a room, Mr. Judge.
I'm just gonna step out and talk to the other woman, if that's okay.
Please do, please do.
You guys don't have to stay.
On-lot sewage does not fall under the Public Safety Director position.
Adam, your family doesn't need to stay.
Well...
I cleaned the house out pretty quickly.
It would appear that public safety is a lot more interesting topic than on-lot sewage, so that's... So, Board members, we do have Resolution 1811 establishing a fee schedule in accordance with Ordinance 1801, which established an on-lot sewage management program. Mr. Wolfe, would you like to make comments?
Board members, the proposed fees are displayed on the board. These fees have been recommended to us by Heather Myers. Heather is an engineer with GHD, and GHD has been retained by the township's Sewage Enforcement Officer. These fees are comparable to those charged by other municipalities in which they provide the same service. Any questions, I'd be happy to address them. I would estimate that on an annual basis, this would affect about 15 properties in our community.
Fifteen?
About 15.
Okay.
Most of our, most of our community is served by public sewer and public water. There are portions, small portions that aren't, and these would be affected by these types of fees.
So, we have, what, about 2,500 septic?
About, yes.
Okay, okay. And will it be up to them to come in to have the inspection, or do we go out and inspect?
We will, we will be providing notice to everybody in our database that has an on-lot system, that they have to have maintenance done, and as part of that maintenance, they have to prove to us that the system is operating properly.
She can't shut the door.
You can't cl...
Oh.
Excuse me. She cannot close the door. Excuse me, you're not allowed to close the door.
Yeah, the door, the door, the door by law has to remain open, so that's okay, let them, let them, we'll deal with the side noise, don't worry about it.
Just talk louder, we're good.
Yeah. No, it's gotta be...
No, you have to open it.
It has to be open.
Yeah, that's okay.
Just tell them to maintain some law and order out there.
You'll end up arresting us.
George, you said that they'll contact us?
Yeah, we will...
They're gonna, we're gonna contact them?
Act of sewage.
Okay.
We will contact all individuals on our database that have on-lot systems, telling them that they have to have maintenance performed on every three-year basis. When they do that, they have to hire a qualified hauler, and that hauler has to do an inspection. They haul out the material in the tank, and they do an inspection of the system, that inspection report has to then be provided to us.
Okay.
And if people don't follow that type of a schedule, we will be in touch with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Do Board members have any questions of Mr. Wolfe?
No, I think it's covered.
If not, would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move, we approve Resolution 201811, which establishes the fee schedule in accordance with Ordinance 201801, establishing the on-lot sewage management program as presented by Mr. Wolfe.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Lindsay. It has been moved and seconded that the Board adopt Resolution 2018-11, establishing a fee schedule for on-lot sewage management program. Are there any additional questions or comments? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That brings us to New Business, and New Business Item A is Resolution 1812, approving a master lease agreement with ROC Leasing LLC for a skid...
It's very beneficial around the shop. It's certainly used in small excavation when we're doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
We just have one?
We just have one, yes.
Mr. Wolf, I think I heard you, but again, with the noise, the, the amount that we're spending is, has been budgeted.
Yes.
And it is within the budget number?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions from Board members? If not, can we have a motion to approve Resolution 1812?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move. We approve Resolution 2018-12, which approves the master lease agreement with ROC Leasing LLC for the Skidsteer loader, loader as presented by Mr. Wolf.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded that we approve Resolution 2018-12. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We will be removing Item 9B from the agenda, which would be Resolution 2018-13, involving lease of a street sweeper. We don't have the documentation quite ready for action this evening, so we will postpone action on that for a week or two. That brings us to an Item C regarding procurement of solid waste and recyclables. And since this involves Penn Waste, a company with which I have a conflict of interest, I will recuse myself from the discussion and turn the gavel over to Mr. Christman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9C, which is the status report, this is not requiring action on the part of the Board, but it is a status report regarding the procurement of solid waste and recycling and the sale of the recyclables, as you know, that RFP has gone out. And so we're having a status report given by Mr. Wolf. Mr. Wolf, please.
Yes, Board members, thank you. This topic of business is moving rapidly, and I did not want to wait until our workshop meeting to provide you this status report. The bids for solid waste and recyclables and Lower Paxton Township were emailed to, bid specifications were emailed to Waste Management, Penn Waste, and Republic Waste Services on February 23rd. The legal ad for the solicitation of the bid documents has been advertised in the Paxton Herald on the 28th of February and the 4th of March. We have a pre-submission conference tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Of course, that's subject to weather. I expect representatives from each of the three haulers, if not more, to be in attendance. We have already been addressing requests for information and answering questions from the three companies that I've referred to in regard to the bid process. So that's a status report on bidding for solid waste and recyclables. There is a second issue that's a little bit more important at this time that you need to be aware of. And that is, Lower Paxton Township up and has currently an agreement with Penn Waste by which we sell our recyclable materials to Penn Waste, and they pay us a minimum amount of money for those recyclables. Our current agreement, as, as you see in this packet, has a floor, a minimum amount, and if I can, if I open the right document. The minimum amount that we currently receive is $5 per ton.
Right.
I've had discussions with Ed Ward of Penn Waste, and he said he's more than willing to continue the same service with Lower Paxton Township, but he's not expecting that he'll be able to provide any minimum payment whatsoever to the township. And in fact, he has cautioned in that any agreement that we could enter into in the future with them actually might cost us money. He has suggested, and it's quite common now among most municipalities, that they put the burden of providing a recycling service provider on the part of the hauler. And he has provided me with sample language to incorporate as an addendum within our specifications to do so. And Board members, if you go to the second item on the agenda, proposed changes, our bid specifications to do this would have to be amended in two locations.
Can we bring that up, George, on the overhead there?
I can do that, yes.
I just thought so the public that was here could see it.
Board members, our current document is going to, we're going to have to delete the references to the successful bidder delivering recyclables from Lower Paxton Township, except leaf waste, to the facility that we designate. And that the successful bidder shall pay no tipping fee to dispose of or deliver those materials. That, that paragraph will have to be removed, and then two other paragraphs will either have to be removed or modified, basically saying the same thing. Lower Paxton Township is then going to add new language, basically stating that the township has a curbside recycling program, and the contact, contractor shall provide all equipment and labor to collect all curbside items specified to be recycled. Collection shall be done as a single stream commingled process. That's how we do it now. Everything that is recyclable is dumped into one container. The contractor shall have the exclusive right to collect, process, and resell the designated recyclable material. With its bid, the bidder shall provide a letter from a recycling center or centers certifying the center's capability to accept the township's material for the full term of the contract. And then, from time to time, placement of recycled materials at curbside for collection shall become both the property of the township and the contractor. And it shall be a violation of the ordinances for any individual to take those materials. So, right now, those materials become the property of the township and the contractor is just the delivery person. Under this amendment, the, the materials will become the property of the recycler and the township in total, and then the contractor will be responsible for delivery and either receiving any rebates for those materials or paying to get rid of them. My, my discussions with Mr. Ward, I, I, I think are worthwhile. Again, Penn Waste is not saying that they won't do business with us, but they're saying that if we can keep, keep or maintain the same business relationship, it may actually cost us money.
Right.
And he suggests that we put the onus of getting rid of recyclables on the haulers themselves. Board members, I plan to move forward that way and issue that addendum, but I wanted to make sure the Board was, number one, aware, and two, they didn't have a problem with moving in that direction.
And, Mr. Wolf, that will be shared with them when you meet with everyone tomorrow.
Absolutely.
And then, just as a follow-up question, I know we had this before, and I didn't write it down. What is the date that our bids are due?
The date that our bids are due?
I'm sorry.
Uh, the easy way to do that, Board members.
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to.
No, I didn't. I should have written that one down. I didn't. But I can get that real quick.
It was more just.
Just to show individuals that if we, moving too fast here, I'm sorry. Legal advertisement bids, solid waste bids are due. And I'll find that here. Pre-submission conference tomorrow, bids are due.
Sorry.
Public, right, uh, March 28th.
March 28th.
It's in the first line. I should have known that.
That's all right. Thank you. Any other Board members have questions of Mr. Wolf of the change that will occur in their meeting tomorrow?
So this is, this is an annual contract?
No, this is for a period of five years.
Five years.
With a possible extension of five years.
Because, I mean, the market can change and.
The, the sale of recyclables, we've done on different terms. That is, solid waste collection is under a statewide law, Pennsylvania Act 101, and there's a defined process for it. The sale of recyclables is something that very few municipalities have done, but you do have the legal right to claim them, recyclables, once they're placed at curbside and actually market them on a bulk basis, which Lower Paxton did. And when recyclables were at a premium price, we would receive rebates, uh, payments for that material approaching $200,000 a year. The recycling market no longer is at that level. And actually, many haulers have to pay to get rid of recyclables.
So they have the risk.
They would have the risk.
They have the market risk.
Correct.
Yeah.
And that's what Penn Waste is suggesting that we consider making the haulers absorb the risk anymore. There's no longer a financial benefit to holding those materials ourself.
Makes sense.
Any other questions from any other Board members?
Nope.
Then we thank you very much, Mr. Wolf, for that report, and I'll, and I'll relinquish the chair back to Mr.. Yes, John.
John Trish sits on Prince Street. It seems to me to be a little premature to not give the other companies at, at least an opportunity to bid for a five-year deal. I mean, I understand that, that some companies have a little monopoly on what they're collecting and how they're collecting it, and I, I understand it costs a lot of money to pick it up, but we've had a couple individuals that, that used to come through the neighborhood and, and collect some of that, and they were both disabled, but, but now they, they're not going to be able to do that. And that's, that's, that's fine. But aren't we a little premature?
Well, well, first of all, first of all, John, they're not, they haven't been allowed to do that since about 1988. So if they are doing it, they've been doing it illegally.
Well, they haven't been doing it in the last year or so, and I think, I think the one passed away, and I think the other one just can't get around.
That was a state law.
But, 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 but the point I'm getting at is, we've been in this deal for over 10 years. And, and I recall when we almost got a, a half a million dollars back on it. I mean, that was a while back, George, but what I'm saying is, why aren't we giving all these, I mean, we sent it out to three companies. There's, you said you sent it out to Penn Waste?
No, no, you're, you're mixing the two processes.
Right.
The bid specifications for collection of solid waste, recyclables, and leaf waste have been sent to three companies. Penn Waste is the only facility in the Harrisburg region that actually accepts and markets recyclables.
Well, okay. And, well, in my opinion, what they're paying us per ton, especially when you look, you look at the, the price of aluminum alone, just for an individual to take aluminum cans down there and cash them in, he's getting up to 45 cents a pound, a pound. We're getting $5 a ton. And I understand it takes material in separation and all that, but I, I, I would agree with Mr. Judd. Maybe we ought to do it year by year, or, or maybe two years or three years, but I think there ought to be some stipulation in there. If they start getting a windfall, then we get a windfall also.
But I'm confident, though, just to be clear, I don't think the market will change that quickly year to year, but I know what you're saying. A lot, a lot of this is market.
Well, you, Mr. Trish makes a good point about aluminum. Aluminum is valuable. Corrugated paper, newsprint, glass, at this point in time, does not possess the same value. In Pennsylvania, in addition to leaf waste, municipalities are required to at least recycle three items, and Lower Paxton Township, we recycle far more than seven. And many of those items aren't bringing a return.
Exactly.
One last question. With, with the bids that went out, did, since the, the session two meetings ago wasn't televised, and that, did we already decide we're getting two 64-gallon cans, or we're going with four, or?
No. That, that's part of what's coming back to us, John. We're not, we're not there yet.
Okay. So you'll let us know what that's going to be?
We've not even had that discussion. We only discussed it, and we said we would put that in as part of the quote that it.
And then we'll know what.
Then we can decide whether, A, we want to do it or don't want to do it. Yeah, we're not there yet.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other Board members have questions? Then we thank Mr. Wolf for that report, and I'll return the chair to Mr. Henry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Christman. That brings us to Item D under New Business, Subdivision and Land Development. And I see we have three improvement guarantees. Mr. Wolf, do you have any comment about these improvement guarantees?
No, unless there's questions, they're complete for action.
Yeah, they look pretty straightforward.
I have a question.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move.
Gary, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I know we've had a lot of inquiry about the Wise Market, and I see there's a stormwater management plan here. Could you just tell me, has Wise Market submitted anything?
No.
Okay. Okay. Just because the public's been asking, and they're like.
I understand. Yes, I know they have. Glad you brought that up.
I think we all get that question daily.
So, just so the public knows, we have no idea what's going there.
My guess, that's why it's listed as an extension.
Good point.
With, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll move. We approve the three improvement guarantees, the reduction of bond, the release, and the extension for letter of credit.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor, any other comments or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that brings us to Item E, Payment of Bills. Madam Treasurer?
I make a motion we pay the bills for Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority.
And I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
It has been moved and seconded by several individuals. Everybody's anxious to pay the bills. You're welcome to come to my house if you're so anxious.
Please record that as Chris is seconding that motion as Assistant Treasurer.
That is Mr. Judd being the second. We do need to vote on it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody have any announcements? The next meeting will be a workshop meeting. It will be on Tuesday, March 13th at 7:00 PM, right here at the Lower Paxton Township Municipal Building. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I will try to.